Good evening and thank you guys so much for attending this.
Hello?
Good. Uh, good evening. Thank you so much for attending today. My name is Christian DeCavero. I'm the Chair of the Kahala-Wai'ali Neighborhood Board. Um, thank you guys so much for participating. Thank you guys so much for being active in the community. We appreciate that. Uh, but it appears as though we do not have forum tonight. What this means for everybody here is since we don't have a majority, we can't vote on things. We do have very little power other than just bugging important people, but occasionally we get to sign things that allow us to bug important people even more. Uh, in order to do that though, we have to vote. In order to have a vote, we need at least five people here. Uh, since there are technically only three board members, um, we'll be able to listen to community residents. We'll be able to listen to concerns. We'll be able to kind of go through the schedule as per usual. However, if there is a resolution that is proposed forward, we will be unable to uh vote on it tonight. We'll be carried to next session. So I just wanted to give everybody the name of the game and how it went this evening. But again, thank you all so much for showing up. Um, let us start then. The gentleman from the Honolulu Fire Department is here this evening. Could we have your community report please?
Good evening. I'm Captain Bellas from the Kamukui Fire Station. Uh, statistics from last month. Uh, for fires, we had one file, uh, violin or brush fire, nine activated alarms, no fires of those. Um, for emergencies, uh, medical accounted for thirty-five. Uh, for our fire safety tip, uh, this month, we're doing, actually this year, the National Fire Protection Agency's Fire Prevention Week campaign strives to educate everyone about the importance of smoke alarms. So our tips for the month of October, install smoke alarms in every bedroom outside each separate sleeping area like a hallway and on each level of the home. Test smoke alarms at least once a month by pushing the test button. Replace all smoke alarms when they are ten years old or stop responding. Uh, any questions?
It's working?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I attended the senior fair this past week.
Okay.
And I got an interesting conversation from somebody asking me about the approach of the fire department with the smoke alarm. Okay, and they're asked, you know, related to Kupuna, said, how come they don't take the approach of helping them get close or better at preventing fires or alerting themselves rather than just saying, put a fire alarm up there? Now, put that perspective, what they're saying is that the Kupuna have a very difficult time checking batteries. They have a difficult time turning them off and false positive. They have a very difficult time, um, having to change a battery should they need to. Uh, but the fire department never says anything about getting fire alarms with ten-year batteries, which, you know, for something like Kupuna makes a lot of sense. And the fact that if there's someplace you can't reach, put them up as high as you can. It's better having them off, which is happening with the other.
So your question is, are there outreach programs that can help the Kupuna with their smoke detectors?
Why isn't there? When you talk about it.
There is an outreach program.
Because all I hear at the time is install fire alarms.
Smoke detectors.
Smoke alarms. Okay. I never hear anything about the approach.
So every month we have a fire safety tip.
Um, for us, I'm talking about. Your TV, other media.
Yep. So October is fire prevention. So we, we send out templates, um, primarily to schools and that's uh to go home so their parents can kind of help that. Whereas Kupuna, there are outreach programs that will help with the smoke detectors. Um, I don't have their email on, um, hand. Uh, but if you can email us, HFD, um, FPB at dot org. Oh, I'm sorry, HFD, uh, NHB at Honolulu dot gov. Uh, there are outreach programs where we can get you information for that.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's outside of the fire department. As far as a online company, um, we can't go to every, you know, we're outward. We have outreach programs that can help install.
But you don't have people that can go and test them or change batteries or.
The outreach programs would do that.
Do that. Okay.
And I think it's specially geared towards the older population.
Oh, good. Okay. Thank you.
They're, they're very helpful.
I didn't know the answer, so I said, I'll bring it up.
Yeah, absolutely. But I mean, that's an important aspect. But yeah, it's not, it's not affiliated with HFD, but it's a fire prevention program that will allow help them install it. I, I believe it's no cost.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate your report this evening. All right, up next, we have a representative from the Honolulu Police Department. Is anyone from HPD here?
All right, good evening. Lieutenant Mura from the Police Department, District Seven.
Good evening, Lieutenant Mura. How are you this evening?
Okay.
Well.
Sorry with the statistics. Thank you. Uh, so why did I call a statistics for last month? Motor vehicle thefts, we had three burglaries, we had four. The thefts, we had sixteen and unauthorized entries into a motor vehicle is thirteen. Total cost for service, six thousand one hundred and nineteen. So being October, we're gonna do some Halloween safety tips for trick-or-treaters. We plan costumes that are bright and reflective or by adding reflective tape or striping. Secure emergency identification, name, address, phone number. Everyone should have a flashlight to see and to be seen. Tips for parents, know who your children will be with and have their parents' contact information. Young children should not be, uh, should be accompanied by an adult. And tips for homeowners, eliminate tripping hazards on your porch or walkway. Check for flower pots, low tree limbs, support wires, garden hoses that may prove to be hazardous to young children rushing from house to house.
Some excellent tips this evening. Thank you. Um, I know that I speak for myself when I say that every year Halloween in Kahala and the Wai'ali area, amazing events. We love to have it. We're so lucky to have so many people coming down and appreciate it in the neighborhood. Um, every year, it does seem as though there's quite a few inebriated drivers. Um, and would love to see, if you guys have the manpower, the extra uh, budget for it, some, some DUI checkpoints in the Kahala area would be lovely. Um, just to make sure we're keeping all those children safe, please.
Yes, absolutely. So usually for those type of weekends, I mean, it's a, it's a department-wide thing. They do, um, uh, especially three-day weekends especially, they do instill sobriety checkpoints a little more often than not. And then we'll try our best as can as far as beefing up manpower and special certain nights like that.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Does anybody have any questions from gentlemen from the HPD?
Thanks, Christian. Um, yeah, Lieutenant Mura. I guess quick questions referencing the new story that just came out regarding the incidences that are happening at Kahala Mall with the vehicles, um, you know, terrorizing the upper deck of the parking lot there. Any new uh information to share with regards to that? And if there's any other incidences like that uh on the streets in our community?
Um, when you say terrorizing, are you mentioning like the, the break-ins and stuff like that?
Uh, no, it's the, uh, they're, they're out there just, um, spinning wheels and just tearing, tearing, um, tearing up the parking lot, spinning around, um, disturbing the, uh, the neighborhood by just really just.
Ghost riding. Appears as though they're ghost riding the red.
Yes, so we've had, we've had, um, projects where officers are assigned to specific complaints, that kind of stuff. So it, I regarding that one, I believe that was on one of the, um, uh, complaints that the officers are asked to do a little bit more frequent checks as best as possible.
I appreciate that. Any, any incidents like that on our streets, uh, in the Wai'ali Kahala area?
Uh, nothing specific recently that, that I get, that I can recall on, on the shifts that I, I've been working.
Appreciate it. Thanks for the information.
Sure thing.
Then, does anybody else have a question for the gentleman from HPD? Uh, there was one community concern that I was reached out to about this month regarding an abandoned boat on a trailer located Kiluea District Park um, on the side of Twenty-Second Avenue near the bathroom entrances. Um, and apparently there's been a couple, uh, homeless people sleeping in there. It's just, uh, it looks like it's been abandoned. But the person in question was asking if we could look into it and perhaps get the boat and the trailer uh, just to not encourage dumping.
Uh, okay. So what is the Kiluea District Park, you said?
Yep. So Kiluea District Park, um, on the Twenty-Second Avenue side located near the bathrooms. Um, and there is, I believe it's a fishing trawler, probably about thirty feet, thirty-five feet, um, located on a big trailer that's been abandoned.
Okay, uh, yeah, we, we can have somebody take a look. Um, I know it bolts, just by experience in the past, bolts can be a little bit tricky because I know they have plates, plates for the trailer and on top of that, the bolt, sometimes they're registered to somebody else. So I think that, that has to go through the state. And as far as removing bolts, um, you know, if it takes like a, it's, it's a little bit more complicated than towing a car, obviously. So just towing the boat, that kind of stuff. I know there's, there's been other issues and stuff like that. But yeah, we could have, uh, we could have officers, you know, take a look and do at least an assessment.
Perfect. And then in the future for abandoned boats, what can we do to make your job easier to have it removed?
So, so there is, um, the city has a abandoned vehicle section. They specifically do abandoned vehicles. They do boot, they do bolts as well. That can be found on, online. Um, you could just, you know, do a search for, um, abandoned vehicles for City Colony Honolulu. Uh, they're, I think they're, they're specifically tasked with those kinds of, um, I guess complaints so they can maybe address it a little bit better sometimes.
Well, perfect. Well, thank you so much for your time this evening.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Um, up next, we have a representative from the Board of Water Supply.
Yes, I'm here. Hi, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Hey, good evening, Lorna. How you doing?
Good. Good evening. Um, for the month of September, um, we have three main breaks to report. Um, one on Halekoa, that was on the tenth of September. And we've got two that was on Kahala Avenue on the twenty-ninth of September. The general announcement that I have this month is about our poetry and poster contest. So the Border Water Supply has launched the contest. It's open to grade seventy-six for the poster contest and the poetry contest is open for grade seven to twelve. A theme this year is Worth of Vi and the deadline this year is, well, I should say next year, the deadline is February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five. Uh, for more information, encourage you folks to our website, wwwboardofwatersupply.com slash WCWcontest. Um, that's all I have for this month. Does anybody have any questions?
Does anybody on the board have any questions for Lorna?
Uh, just a quick comment. Uh, I was at the senior fair a week ago and Border Water Supply was handing out um, bags that you can pour water in in case there's a emergency coming. And I just want to say, uh, thank you. That was a good job. A lot of people have commented to me about that, that they don't have to have, uh, fifty gallons of water stored in their bedrooms or something. They can get water and put in the bag. So, thank you.
Good. I'm glad you're there. I must have missed you. I was, I was there as well in, um, the morning time. So must have missed you. But I'm glad you got to take advantage of those.
Do we have any community comments for Lorna, Border Water Supply this evening? Then, Lorna, are you the one that I have to thank? Uh, we reported that, uh, the resurfacing of the road last month. Um, and then this month, we had like a group, like twelve cars come through and repave everything. Thank, is, is that your department that did that?
Well, I reported, I did mention that because even folks did say you had concerns about that. So I just forwarded that concern over and it's not my department, but it's just some information to help you guys out. Glad they got there.
Well, that makes me so happy to see that done. So thank you so much for helping address that.
Definitely.
Well, thank you so much for your time this evening, Lorna.
Thank you. Good evening.
All right, up next, we have election of officers, which we will have to skip because we do not have forum this evening. Uh, up next, we have the filling of vacancies, which we will also skip as we do not have forum. Uh, do we have any reports of members attendance at other meetings? I noticed that we have two members from a different neighborhood board here this evening. Does anybody on our side want to, uh, probably gaggle with the other side? I'll get, I'll claim it first. Up next, we have Patty Jettie here today. Representative Josh Green, Governor Josh Green. That's Patty Jettie. Next. Uh, Department of Transportation, Casey, Casey Abe, are you here this evening?
Yes, I am. Um, let me show my screen here.
Casey, how you doing this evening?
Oh, fine. All right, let me. No. Just a minute here. Okay, you can see the screen. Uh, good to meet you, Christian, and members of the Wai'ali Colony Report, KCR for State Duty, Highway Division. As mentioned, Laura, uh, as mentioned by Lorna, yeah, and last month, meaning the, the, um, concern was the repaving of the bumpy road while I am on a Kai Street intersection due to the water main break a couple of months ago. Yeah, went out last week and it looks good. They repaved the whole interstate, well, almost our whole intersection, um. They also paved the meeting area in, in your section, as, but the board still needs to install permanent pavement striping. So we'll need to report back at a future meeting when the striping work has been completed. But at least the, uh, bumpy road is all gone. No, it's nice and smooth. Also during my field inspection, um, the old district maintenance crew managed to paint over the graffiti that was exposed after they trimmed the trees along the on-ramp during going eastbound on Colonial Highway. And they also removed graffiti from the warning sign as you approach like Kiluea Avenue traveling westbound. But during my field inspection, I did find some other new graffiti. So I'll be working with our maintenance crew to remove or paint over the new graffiti. And finally, I must apologize again, but our old district maintenance crew has still not replaced their existing speed limit fifty minimum forty signs on H-one freeway. I am still waiting for them to get back to me as to when they will be scheduling the work. Um, but if the board really wants the signs to be replaced as soon as possible, I recommend the board, uh, have their state senator or state representative email or contact our deputy director for highways, Mr. Robin Shishido, and our highways administrator, my boss, uh, Mr. Lawrence Larry Dill. And I would appreciate if I can get a copy of that email. I will place, I will place this email, um, their email address in the chat. Uh, this concludes my report. I can take questions at this time.
Casey, you are my favorite person in all the world right now. God bless you. No, seriously. Thank you so much for getting that street repaved. That was, uh, that is exactly what we wanted. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, that's all the comments I got on my end. Um, board members, any comments for Casey this evening? We got double thank yous over here and then a community. I have one representative from an additional neighborhood board approaching the microphone.
Hi, Casey. I'm here as a member, uh, not a member, as a community resident. Um, when are you going to replant trees on the Wai'ali Avenue on-ramp and the trees underneath the viaduct that that the illegal campers killed?
Say it again now?
When is, uh, State Department of Transportation, if indeed, because you did the trimming over there on the Wai'ali Avenue on-ramp?
Right.
Goes up to Kani on the only highway.
Right.
When are you going to replant the trees that were cut down? Now they're big bald spots.
Oh, in the median area.
Big bald spots, yeah. And underneath the viaduct across from the gas station, you know, Asagio's, where the illegal campers killed the trees, uh, when are you going to replant? Since part of the deal to get those viaducts built is to have the plantings there for the community.
Okay, let me go, uh, get back to you on that. Uh, I'll have to check with our district office.
But you, you cut them down, so wouldn't you replace them?
Well, yeah, so I would have to talk to them because we want to make sure that we can plant trees that, um, will not give us problems in the future. So we'll, again, we'll, I gotta get back to you on that. Report back.
Okay. Does the board need to take any action to encourage that along?
Oh, again, you can, um, rec, uh, talk to, um, the elected officials, Senator, the state senator or representative, and they can, um, email our deputy director and our administrator. That'll help.
I'd like to remind everybody, board included, that their Senate passed a bill some years ago that makes it legal for the police to go in there and take the illegal campers out. And it should be posted on the wall so that the police know that they have the authority to do so because they get scared to do it. But they, they need to know that it's illegal for the illegal campers to be there. And it's not something they're going to be reprimanded for because the Senate passed a bill that they could do it. Okay? Good idea. Because they killed all the trees. They've killed all those phoenix palms, you know, over on the other side where they going, you know, Eva killed over there. So it's, it, it's part of the bargain that you got it built and have plantings in there. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much for bringing that to attention and also shedding light on the Senate bill that was passed on that. That's very helpful. Uh, Casey, I, I own an environmental stewardship company. I have a list of plants to you that will thrive under that area within the week, all native. So.
Oh, you can emulate, yeah.
Uh, yeah, so we can get you jumping forward on that. Um, does anybody else have any comments for Casey Abe this evening? Perfect. Casey, as always, thank you so much for your time. Thanks for the work that you got done this month.
All right. No problem. Thank you.
Yeah. All right, up next, uh, we got John Nucci. John, are you here this evening? Mayor Rick Blangiardi's representative.
Okay, uh, the Neighborhood Plan Review, the Neighborhood Commission's Plan uh, Committee, and, oh wait. Oh, okay, nevermind. It's began meeting to conduct a comprehensive review on the neighborhood plan. A presentation with more information is available on your board's Google Drive. The committee currently meets on the third Monday of every month at six PM. If you have any questions, please contact the Neighborhood Commission Office. This is regarding the change of the Neighborhood Plan Review.
Thank you very much for the announcement, Hanson. Um, up next, we have Council Member Tommy Waters. Oh, there we go. We got him right here.
Aloha, members and chair, members of the community. Nice to see you all. So I want to start by talking about the Primary Urban Core Development Plan, which is scheduled to have a hearing before the Planning and Economy Committee this coming Tuesday. As you know, the city has what's called a Honolulu General Plan, which takes care of the entire island of Oahu. The General Plan has identified two areas on the island for future growth. One is the Eva area and the second is the Primary Urban Core. The Primary Urban Core runs from Kahala to Mililani. So the Primary Urban Development Plan was submitted by DPP to the Planning Commission and some of us and some of you on the board actually submit comments to the Planning Commission. And then the Planning Commission either adopts the recommendations or rejects them and sends it over to the council. So I made a bunch of suggestions based on, you know, me walking door-to-door in the Kahala area as well as coming to your neighborhood boards. Unfortunately, the Planning Commission rejected, um, our suggestions. However, the good news is that the final say rests with the Honolulu City Council. So we're taking public comment on the Primary Urban Core this Tuesday. Um, so the, the the amendments that I'm suggesting is, uh, this. One, we want to, so also before I start about what my amendments are, there is a push to build more affordable housing and the idea is to allow housing above commercial spaces. Yeah? So right now.
Can you, can you repeat that one more time, that, that sentence?
Yeah, in order to, to make more land available for housing, there's a push to allow housing above commercial spaces. Yeah? So where the zoning works is you're either zoned commercial or you're zoned residential. Of course, you could be zoned agricultural, um, preservation and whatnot. But as it relates to this, you cannot build housing above a commercial space, right? This zoning doesn't allow it. So there's a push to allow for housing above commercial space. Now, as that relates to you all, for example, housing above Kahala Mall. Yeah? So the Primary Urban Core Development Plan, as submitted from DPP to the Planning Commission and then to the council, will allow apartment buildings above Kahala Mall. It'll also allow apartment buildings above Foodland, which is across the Foodland Shopping Center area, which is across from Kahala Mall. Time supermarket area, right? Um, that would be allowed. The Petland area, right, by Wilson Elementary would be allowed. So based on responses that I got from Kahala, they asked me to downgrade that. So I made recommendations that would only allow up to three stories in all of those commercial areas. The other recommendation that I made was to protect the view plane from Kahala Park looking towards Diamond Head, looking towards Diamond Head. Um, as, I'm not sure this, uh, you folks are concerned about, but it also protects the view plane from Mount Alani Heights going towards Diamond Head. Yeah? Um, okay, there's that, the Primary Urban Core Development Plan. Second thing I wanted to talk about was Bill Forty-Six, Bill Forty-Six, which is the empty homes tax. Somewhat controversial because it would increase the tax rate for homes that are left vacant. So I'd like to re, um, refer you all to this U-Hero study by the University of Hawaii, um, Economics Research Office, which basically talks about the severe shortage of affordable housing on our island. Really, really interesting, um, uh, research that was done there. But basically, the median price of a home on Oahu is now one point one million dollars. And according to them, we have the highest rents in the entire nation. In twenty-twenty-two, we had outmigration of sixty-seven thousand people. Well, what's been reported in the news is that it's fifteen thousand. That's because they reported fifty thousand people came here, but really seventy-six thousand people left. Yeah? That's our brothers, sisters, uncles, aunties, friends, relatives and whatnot. Sixty-seven thousand people. So since I've been on the council, we've approved, approved over eight thousand affordable units, eight thousand. The Department of Business and Economic Development has said that we need about twenty-five thousand more units. So how do we do that? We can't, at this point, build our way out of that problem. So we're trying to get creative to incentivize homeowners who own properties that are vacant to rent it out. Because if you rent it out, you wouldn't have to pay the higher tax or perhaps sell it to another local family. The census has reported that statewide, we have over thirty-four thousand vacant units. On Oahu, we have over eighteen thousand vacant units. So the idea with Bill Forty-Six is to incentivize folks to actually rent out their home or to sell it. Because if you rent it out, you don't have to pay the higher tax rate. We got a lot of testimony on this bill from a lot of local people who do own second homes and they don't want to rent it out. Um, as an example, if people buy a beach home, uh, in Mokulea, one testifier came and testified. So basically, um, the council and discussions are trying to take care of folks in that situation. If you're a caregiver and you, you're taking care of a family member, that's not, and you're forced to live there because you're taking care of your loved one, that would be an exemption. If you're in the military and you're, you're, um, deployed, that would be an exemption. But really, the idea, I mean, we have a lot of people buying property here on Oahu who are from the continent or from another country and they're leaving the home vacant. So the idea is really to get these homes. So the idea is really to get these homes filled. It's it's controversial, quite honestly, I'm not sure if we have the votes to pass this, but, um, we're having a informational hearing on this. We're taking testimony on November 8th, November 8th. Um, just log into homelesscitycouncil.org to weigh in, because I'd really love your all feedback. The other thing I wanted to point out that we actually did a riser to the administration dealing with, uh, boat trailer on 22nd Avenue, and we were told that the city does not have the capability to tow it away. So that's something we should look at during the budget process to perhaps fund, um, a tow truck large enough to tow away boats. But at this point, the city doesn't have that capability. On the news, you know, I heard, um, earlier the discussion regarding those cars that were doing donuts on the parking lot at Kahala Mall. I hadn't heard about that. However, uh, I think the news also reported that there was racing on Keala Olu. By the way, ever since I've taken office in 2019, I was aware of this, and we immediately put in risers to fix that. The good news is that the Department of Transportation, as far as I can tell, are almost finished with their study and plan to implement traffic calming devices on Keala Olu starting next year. So so that's good news. But anyway, I've been talking a lot, I'm available for questions, Chair.
Well, thank you for all, uh, how are you all there? Thank you for all that information, Councilmember Waters. It's always good to have you and appreciate you showing up in person as well. Um, let's see, does anybody on the board have any questions for Councilmember Waters?
Councilmember Waters, I'm Brian Wong. Uh, just a quick comment, uh, at this time, it's good they're gonna have that meeting on the 8th of November, uh, regarding the, um, uh, Bill 46. I'm very interested to see that. I read the the most recent draft of the bill, saw the various exemptions, saw, um, the tax implications, uh, as well, whatever's on there. You use the word incentivize, I'm not sure that's the real co- correct word to incentivize people, because it looks more of a penalization if you don't. Uh, so anyway, I think it's just semantics there, but I look forward to see, um, being at that meeting and, uh, uh, hearing testimony, perhaps sharing some of mine as well. Uh, I wanted to know, uh, because this came up, it sparked a thought from a past, um, matter regarding the wastewater utility fee. And as I understand it, it's still simmering on the back burner somewhere, and I just wanted to know what the status of that might be.
Actually, we have, we might actually have two gentlemen here this evening from UNV, which is the, uh, wastewater plant, and they want to discuss fee raises. And then next month, we also have another presentation from a separate group from UNV about the upgrades to water stations as well. Um, so we will be having presentations, one of which should be covering that topic either this month or next month.
Um, no, thank you, Brian, I I hear you. Basically, the incentive is if you rent out your property, you don't have to pay the higher tax. But I hear you, um, it i- it is semantics. But, you know, I am coming up with a a further committee draft, Brian, that I should be filing within the next couple of days to try to alleviate some of the other concerns. So, yeah, um, we could either email it to you or just, um, keep abreast of the website, because I'll be posting it pretty shortly. Again, as far as the wastewater utility, I do know that ENV is there, I'll defer to them. Initially, when it was submitted to the council, you know, I felt that not enough, um, education had gone on regarding the proposed utility fee. Um, and I asked ENV to go out to the community and educate folks, so I think that's what they're going to do. But I will tell you this, Brian, the fact of the matter is, our stormwater system needs to be upgraded. It cannot handle these big, huge rains like we got, um, that rain bomb in Inahaina a couple of years ago. You know, periodically, when it rains hard, I'll go out and check out areas, mostly in Kamakiki, where the the storm drains are actually overflowing. They cannot handle, um, a large rain. And what I'm really concerned about is if we get another rain bomb, we're gonna have more flooding. One of the things I wanted to try to do, and I'm sure ENV is there, and maybe they'll comment, maybe they won't, but why don't we start with the state and federal government, charging them the utility fee right before we charge taxpayers that amount? And by the way, we're always looking for ways to generate revenue for the city so that we don't have to do something like this, um, without raising taxes on local people. And I've been encouraging the Director of Envir- um, Your Price Services to get more creative, to figure out how we can generate money. Um, but I don't want to raise property taxes, that's that's something that that nobody wants. But thank you for the question.
Um, Councilman Water. Um, what is your take on the request for an exemption for local people that own a second house? Especially ones that own, uh, camp on the North Shore, and might stay, you know, three or four weeks a year. And in the meantime, they might rent it out or let it out legally or illegally, you know, to their friends. Yeah, what's your take on that?
I I I only could catch a few words, uh, in your question. Um, but at the last full council hearing, um, a gentleman who had a vacation home on the North Shore, who just keeps it for family and friends, um, talked about how his taxes would have increased significantly. Turns out, there's a lot of people just like him similarly situated. So we're trying to figure out an exemption for people like that, but we want to make sure it's legal to do so. Um, I'm looking at legislation in Colorado. Um, they've figured out a way, if you can show that you're generating income here in Hawaii, perhaps using your, showing your income tax return, and you get an exemption for one house only. If you own two vacant homes, then it wouldn't apply to your second vacant home, only the first vacant home. That's still in the works, that's what I was talking to about, talking about when Brian asked me the question, that that keep an eye out for the committee draft. Hopefully, that answered your question, sir.
Yes, it did, thank you.
Okay.
Do we have any community comments for Councilmember Waters?
Hi, Councilmember Waters, that's Sherry Spangler from the community. Um, I am happy about the concept with Bill 46, the concept. But and I hope you can do something about the fact that there is land banking, that no matter what we build, it's going to be scarfed up by international or mainland investors, and even local. Um, but a lot, um, international. When we scout for filming, go through Waikiki and the kiosks, I collect every magazine there, and I look through them. And all they do is advertise our real estate with the prices and the amenities, and what they look like, and what you can do there, and where to go. So it's it's land banking because banks aren't considered safe. They're gonna buy our real estate, no matter what it looks like, even if it's 400 square feet in Kakaako. So I don't know how we can build ourselves out of this problem, we as locals. I mean, I grew up here pre-statehood, and I think there's always been an issue, but it's just grown and grown and grown. So I'm hoping that somehow, within your Bill 46, that thing of land banking and its its worldwide monetization of real estate, and it's not gonna stop because banks aren't considered safe. They don't give interest. People are saying the only safe around the world, the only safe investment now is real estate. And Hawaii is always a plus. So in Kahala Mall, I have been worried for quite some time that Kahala Mall would look to do at Kahala Mall what they've been doing at Alamoana Shopping Center. Oh, you know, we'll take this unused corner, and we will get bigger bang for our buck by building condos, hotels, condo hotels, or whatever they want to call them. And I always worried it would come to Kahala. And that's part of the reason we don't, in the East Honolulu Sustainable Communities Plan, one of the reasons we don't want Kahala in our plan, because there's a lot of growth conceptualized for the Kahala Business District. People don't, leases are coming up all over the place in 10, 13, 15 years. Even down at the Kahala Hotel, Kahala Beach Apartments, we have to be on the lookout for that, and I'm hoping that in your Bill 46, you could somehow deal with it. I don't know how, but, uh, it's a huge issue, all of us who want to continue living here. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Ms. Spangler, nice to see you, and I think we're on the same page here. You know, interesting, if you folks have the time, take a look at that U-Hero, um, study. It's called the Housing Factbook 2024. And it breaks down the whole state by zip code. First, by the state, then by island, and then each island, you could break it down by zip code. And you can see how many out-of-state buyers we are getting. On Oahu, it's not as bad as the neighbor islands. On Oahu, I think it's about 17%. How they tell is where they mail the property tax bill to. But on the Big Island and on Kauai, as an example, 50% in 2023, 50% of the single-family homes and and apartments were to out-of-state buyers. Um, so that's partly what 46 is trying to address. Our property, our property tax rate, even though our property taxes are elevated because of the property value, but our property tax rate looks very attractive to outside investors because it's 0.03%, 3.5%. And I will, uh, email you, I did a spreadsheet, I didn't bring it tonight, but a spreadsheet on what that looks like in comparison to other cities of like size. So, you know, it is a, it's a place for people to invest, and it's it's hurting, I think, um, our ability to buy a home.
Thank you for those comments, Councilmember Waters. And thank you, Ms. Spangler, as always, for the information that you bring to the table. One of the greatest resources of local information, sitting right behind you guys over there. So if you guys got questions, she's definitely got answers for you. All right, does anybody else in the community have any questions for Councilmember Waters this evening? Councilmember Waters, thank you so much for your time. We release you, be free to go, please enjoy your.
Stay on, I'm just gonna turn my camera off.
Thanks so much.
You guys.
All right, was the representative from Bertram Kobayashi's district here, Bertrand Kobayashi? Oh, all right. Representative from Mark Hasha? Nope. Uh, do we have a representative from Senator Stanley Chang's office?
One, hi, I'm Angie Chapman, um, with Senator Chang's office. Putting some links in the chat to the September monthly district newsletter and a link to sign up to Senator Chang's housing newsletter. Just a couple, um, announcements, the Department of State has fully launched its new online passport renewal system, which you can do on the link provided. And also, take a short 10-minute survey to share with our state libraries how they can better serve you. You can visit the survey on the link in the chat. That's all I have, if anyone has questions, I'd be happy to take it back to the office.
Any board members have questions for Ms. Angie this evening? Any community questions? Quick and easy, awesome, thank you so much for your time. Up next, we have community concerns, and we have Jim Nicolai here, uh, who has a couple concerns he would like to bring forth to the community, after which we will open it up to the floor for any other residents who have any concerns in the local community.
Thank you, I'm Jim Nicolai. I'm representing residents in the place, and I'd like to bring the neighborhood board up to date on recent developments regarding a property in our street. Put these here. The photos, the photos on the board really just. But to bring the, uh, board up to date, earlier this year, 25-foot tall fence was erected at 949 Keala Olu Place with our building. Along portion, it's not the fine screen frontage at Waiala Golf Course. Department of Planning and Planning was notified this board, and a notice violation was issued. Subsequently, the owner applied for a zoning variance. DPP conducted a hearing on this variance on October 4th in order to rule the application, which would allow the owners to retain the non-permitted 25-foot tall structure. Despite this board's letter to DPP in May and the subsequent notice violation in June, this board was not notified of a public hearing, nor provided the opportunity to come. In fact, only four adjoining owners were notified in advance of a public hearing. Not even the adjacent Waiala Country Club was notified of the zoning variance. Community and residents of the street, which you would make a question for scrambling, submit testimony in opposition at weather power. Nearly all residents on the street, as well as others nearby, also submitted opposition testimony. Following Chrisken's letter, DPP appears to have sent notices to the RAP, the agency's offices, some of whom, like Tommy Waters' office, received their notice days after the hearing. Sunshire, Wam, Obah, Oak, Art, Pacific Resource Partnership, US Coast Guard Civil Engineering Unit might want to participate in this meeting, but Waiala Country Club and the Charlo family, which looks directly across the canal at property, were not. Regardless, there are many reasons to oppose zoning variance to one of these 25-foot tall structures. First, the fencing structures were installed within the boundaries set in fact, which limits heights to six feet, according to the ALU. They're asking for more than four times what it's allowed. The Hollis neighborhood, Providence also restricts structures like this to preserve the character. And this property is not to be as a golf. There are about a similarly located houses around Waiala Golf Course. Some of these are even closer. Any of these houses have an assumed risk of occasional golf balls striking a home in a golf field operation. The owners of this property designed this house specifically for this site, directed all the elements of its designing and construction. All planting, which once protected previous homes on this straight golf course, were removed by these owners. There's been no attempt to replace them. Most obviously, the 25-foot tall fence towers over neighboring houses and yards obstructs views, diminishes character or otherwise for the neighborhood. Waiala Hall residents are concerned that allowing 25-foot tall fencing here will set precedent adversely affecting the entire community. Allowing 25-foot tall fence like this opens the door to other houses, putting Waiala Golf Course in small state. Imagine if your neighbor felt entitled to erect fencing 25-foot tall along nearby. So the residents of Keala face requests, neighborhood, the Waiala Hall, the neighborhood board, again, invite to DPP. We have five requests. First, request that DPP here devote the intent, the purpose of public participation on matters like this, which affect the larger community. Two, keep the board, keep this board phrase detailed progress of this application because DPP did not inform this neighborhood board or other affected parties in a timely manner. Third, respond to concerns raised with non-permitted construction, perhaps permits and potential or potentially carefully or supermit applications on this property. Four, restate for the opposition, zoning variance application. And finally, the request that the non-permitted be removed. Residents are concerned that regardless of the outcome of this zoning variance application, the existing fence may remain and that additional fencing will be added. Nearly two years ago, the owner installed ten other large steel bases along one hundred seventy-foot canal, apparently without permits. There's a legitimate concern that this zoning variance application, high voltage does not disclose actual intent, but can more host along. This would create about two hundred linear continuous twenty-five-foot surrounding property. No alternatives protect the house with all costs here to have been considered. No alternatives for fragile porcelain tile and glass facade here to have been thought. As Christian pointed out in his testimony, landscape solutions might address the owner's concerns per se without community, because this typical in our neighborhood throughout this. So we're asking that this board all help protect the character of our neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration and support.
Thank you very much again for taking the time to come down here and present. This is the seventh or eighth time, or, or, good, fourth? Fourth time that Mr. Nicolai has come down with this exact concern, still seeking relief from it. I sent off a letter to the DPP, but their response was unhelpful. And as you guys can see from the photos, it's egregious, it's notorious, it's open, it's known, it's, uh. My personal opinion is that they knew exactly what they're doing. They're trying to use the safety of their children. It's a bargaining chip. It does not match, does not match the community whatsoever. And if you brought an ounce of common sense to the table, you wouldn't build a large marble house directly next to a golf, next to a golf course, and then complain when your floor-to-ceiling windows are getting broken with golf balls. That seems like a pretty, pretty easy thing. But, uh, so actually, Councilmember Waters, I see your hand up. Perhaps you can, uh, help guide us in a sound direction.
Yeah, no, thank you, Mr. Nicolai, and thank you to the board. So my staff briefed me on this earlier today and the decision has been drafted. It will be issued soon. Uh, I don't know what the decision is, however, I feel very confident that, um, it's gonna be struck down and they're gonna have to take down this, this net because you're only allowed a six-foot wall. And, um, the, the hard part's gonna be, right, to enforce it and get DPP to make them take it down once they issue that decision. Because you look at this homeowner, they were in violation. They were told they couldn't build it and they built it anyway. So I'll, I'll keep on it, Mr. Nicolai. This is, we're not gonna let this go. And if we have to foreclose on that house, or at least threaten to foreclose on it, and I'll push for that. But yeah, they're open and notorious and there's no reason to allow this to go on. But thank you. Appreciate you bringing it up again today.
Thank you for paying attention, Councilmember Waters. Appreciate it. Judging by the smile on Jim's face over here, he seems pretty happy right now as well. Um, perfect. Uh, we are opening it up to general community questions and concerns. Uh, would anybody like to approach and, uh, and be heard?
Sorry, it's just pent-up, pent-up concerns. I read these minutes religiously and I wanna come and wanna go. I came tonight because I saw this issue. And because of the Complete Streets project on Kilauea, but this I wanted to talk about because we live on the golf course. Um, we don't want all homes on the golf course to think, oh, I better put up twenty-five-foot fences. They might all do it. So they have to stop this one. And it also affects the country club. It affects the Sony Open. It's, it's, it's an egregious, ugly prison-like, concentration camp-like look, especially at that, at that property, it's in your face. And that homeowner is in your face. And he's kind of flying in the face of, you know, elected officials going. So anyway, we don't want the whole golf course communities, Kainani, Wailea Golf Course subdivision, people of Kahala and the Wailea Country Club thinking, oh, it's open sesame. You can all build twenty-five-foot fences. It's, it's gotta stop and this one has to be made. You know, it's the obvious example. There are a few around, but they're very set back. They're hidden among plantings. They don't show. This one's in your face. That's one of the reasons I came tonight, number two coming up. Sorry to talk.
As always, it is appreciated. Yeah, I can't even imagine what that would do to the property value overnight if everybody built one of those fences. I see another young lady over here who'd like to present as well.
Yes, hi, Stephanie Spangler from the Wailea Golf Course subdivision. Um, we came to the neighborhood board number three many years ago and Scott struck down the sixty-foot poles the Wailea Perfect wanted to construct around their driving so that when the Sony Open came, they could have the pros hit higher balls and not block the community. So hang it from palm trees. Oh, learning what? That's exactly what they did. So they respected the wishes of not constructing a huge wall barrier of poles with like the Baywatch, you know, Baywatch, the Bayside, Kona Bay, Mini Golf, all those poles. So, um, how these guys can put poles up and netting without any respect towards the community area and the wishes of the landowners, you know, landscaping is unconscionable. So I just speak in. For. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for having your voice for us. Appreciate it. Um, does anybody else have any, uh, community concerns or comments to make this evening? All right, on that, for business, unfinished business and presentations. Um, we need to improve our meeting minutes from the last meeting. Uh, I think it's going to hurt us. Uh, that's right, never mind. They don't get, they don't get to improve the minutes. And we don't look to. Uh, up next, we have a presentation from the Department of Environmental Services out of New Sewer Service Park. Are the gentlemen, ladies, ladies, please? Anybody from? Yeah, we. All right. Um, and then, so up next, uh, do we have Alicia?
Hello. Hello, yes. Hi, I'm Alicia from the American Heart Association. I know it's super early because our event is not until next year, but we're already planning for our annual heart walk. It's gonna be Saturday, August ninth, twenty twenty-five, at Kapialani Regional Park. There will be two lane closures, uh, or one lane closure around Diamond Head Road, Coco, um, the crater side. And it'll be from seven thirty AM when the walk starts to, and it should be cleared up by eleven AM. This is a free event, so feel free to attend. All the money raised goes to heart research as well as our programs for the outer islands to teach about healthy eating and a healthy lifestyle. Any questions?
Could you restate where the event is being hosted, please?
It's gonna be at Kapialani Regional Park.
All right, let's. Um, does anybody have, from the community, have any questions? I think we're all good. Alicia, thanks for reaching out and putting this together. We appreciate it. We look forward to attending this event.
Thank you.
All right, up next, uh, we've, we don't get to vote on the resolution, we don't get to vote on the resolution. Um, announcements, our next regular board meeting will be held Thursday, November twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. Ms. Bangler?
I didn't speak under community concerns because I, I saw on the agenda that we're gonna discuss a a resolution about the Complete Streets Kilauea project.
Yes, unfortunately, because we do not have a quorum this evening, we cannot post the resolution, but we're more than happy to discuss it.
Can I just show my picture and you'll show you our?
Let the record reflect that everyone has been very well, uh, just set up for this evening. So thank you. We can, we can visually inspect it.
Sorry. Um, the Complete Streets project, I'm not quite sure what stage it's at now, if they've changed it or altered. I heard that they're gonna make the the possible narrowing further down past the Greek restaurant. But the problem is, this is what I kept saying, why we don't want Kahala in our East Honolulu Communities Sustainability Plan because things that affect us are not being looked at in Kahala. Here's, who's gonna be affected by the narrowing of Kilauea Avenue? If they do the Complete Streets projects, just for some bicyclists, gonna be affected by Waikai, New Valley, Tulioo, Aina Hina, Wailea Lower Ridge, Wailea Eki, Klani High School, Klani Eki Valley, Aina Hina, and all the people on the ocean side, Kainani, Piko, um, and then Kahala. And the problem is, it's a secret, it's not, it's not a well-kept secret. All the people that used to use the freeway, they come down on Klani Ani Ole going west, and they think, oh, I can't get on the freeway because it's too congested and it stops. Stops in Kahala and backs up into Kahala. It stops in Kaimaki, backs up into Kahala. They blame Klani High School. And then, uh, people have said, I'm not even, even Richard Turbin said this. They kind of turn off and they go on, they go on Alawai now. I shouldn't even be giving out the secret. And the people said, don't tell the secret. But yeah, that's what I'm saying. It's not a well-kept secret. Yeah. So our problem is, people now don't even wanna take the freeway. So they all down Klani Ani Ole Highway and they come down on the, underneath the viaduct, they turn left onto Kilauea Avenue. That whole region, Waikai, and actually now Waimeanalo, because they don't wanna take the Polyhighway, so Waimeanalo comes around. They all come down. They all come down here, they get off the freeway, underneath the viaduct, Wailea Avenue off that, and they go down here, all of them. And then they filter through the hills of, uh, Diamond Head and Camel, you know, Camel Avenue, whatever, you know, Pahoa, Harding. Uh, it becomes a nightmare. And to this Complete Streets thing is not well thought out. If, if anything, they should be doing, um, a test. Do some, put some cones out there and show what the effect would be if where they narrow, where they want to narrow and, and take, and make it one lane. That will affect all of East Honolulu. Everybody who's getting off the freeway, it's, it's, this is a nightmare. This is a nightmare. This is becoming a new nightmare. Now it's all filtering here. They take Pahoa, then they filter through all the hill community. So at the very least, state and the city should get together and do a study with cones and show, or barricades and show what the effect would be, what they wanna do, and see what happens to the traffic. Because or the community could park their cars, everybody come down and just park. And let's see what happens. Yeah, it's, it's gonna be a nightmare and they haven't given it any thought. They're also in love with the Complete Streets and the bicyclists and all they need this. But it's, it's already been a nightmare on King Street. This deals with an entire region. And as I said, I didn't even include Waimeanalo because Waimeanalo no longer wants to go around to Polyhighway because that's a nightmare. So they all come around East Honolulu, come down Klani Ani Ole Highway. We used to take filming in the eighties, we'd be out there at Sandy Beach in the complete darkness, waiting for the guys to come with the lights. There'd be no lights on the highway. And through the years, through the years, through the years, all the cars are coming around Waimeanalo. They go, who filters through, uh, what is now Hawaii Kai. It's Waikai grew. We've watched this grow. All the people that used to take Polyhighway now comes our way on Klani, East Honolulu. This, we have to do a study, state and city together because it's, it's all these competing jurisdictions. Because under, this is state, Klani Ani Ole Highway, try and see it fast. Uh, underneath the viaduct is still state. Even though it looks like it's city. This, parts of this might be state, but then this becomes city. And they have to, they have to work together. And stop saying, oh, this says state, that's city. They have to work together and do a study and actually physically show what'll happen. Everybody, when they avoid the freeway, they kill away, they Pahoa, where to go around Diamond Head, and they're all getting on Alawai now. We figured that out. It's like so cool. I'm gonna go downtown via the Alawai Canal. Boom, zing. And, uh, Richard Turbin knows that too. Um, but anyway, that's my request, that's my discussion, and it's a very serious problem. I've discussed it at our board. We didn't have form either. A new problem. But I, I heard that you were gonna give a presentation. I was dying to hear what you had to say because there has to be some kind of, um, presentation by city and state. Physically, what's gonna happen to that, to us? Thank you.
Okay, sorry, Councilmember Waters?
Um, you know, great, great comments. You know, honestly, I grew up over there. I don't need the study. I haven't monitored this. My feeling is if it ain't broke, don't fix it. So I've been talking to DTS about this for months and I've told him, look, guys, the community doesn't want it. We don't need it, right? Let's be very careful where we spend our money. What I do support is, is you go down, uh, Kilauea Avenue a little bit more where, as you get towards the the middle school. We could use sidewalks on the right-hand side of the road so the kids don't have to walk in the dirt. But, uh, everybody I've talked to in Kahala, they said, don't do it. And I've communicated that to the mayor, to the director of Department of Transportation Services. Fact of the matter is, though, they're not considering this until there is a repaving project. And they're not scheduled to repave it for at least five or six years. But they're just trying to prime the pump at this point and get community support. So let's keep vigilant on this and I'll let you know if there's any, um, any serious movement towards doing it. At this point, it's just being talked about. There's no.
I just read something that they're gonna start in January twenty-five.
No, no. I'll double-check, you, I'd send you an email, but no, that's, that's not true. And if you have that information, please send it over to me.
Yeah, so actually, on our next meeting, November twenty-first, we have the Complete Streets Administrator coming down, uh, and will be discussing this. She will be in attendance at our next meeting and she will be discussing this openly so that we can all ask our questions, press the flesh, uh. Yeah, get some answers that make everybody a little bit more satisfied.
Awesome, awesome, Chair. Thank you. Hey, did Ian V not show up today? Were they invited?
Pardon?
Did Ian V not show up today and were they invited?
Um, so we were in email correspondence with each other. There appears to be two separate groups doing two separate projects for two separate either pump stations or the same pump station, but different projects. It was a little unclear to me uh, through the emails I got. But so one was supposed to present today, one is presenting next month. Uh, or they might have combined it together into next month because I, I let them know that there were two groups reaching out simultaneously.
Because they do wanna raise our sewage. Because they do want to raise our sewer fees. So I told them, they need to get out there and tell people about it. So I don't want to be the one who breaks the bad news. I want them to tell you folks what they're proposing. And it's very, very drastic, and I'm very concerned.
How drastic are we talking, since we've got you online?
It's significant, let me put it that way. And I told them, they better come out and explain to the community why they want to raise our rates. Because my water bill's like $26 a month, but I pay $100 in sewer fees, right? And they want to raise that more? Anyway, I'll leave it for them. It does concern me that they weren't here tonight, so I'll call the director tomorrow and make sure.
I'll follow up with an email as well, too, to the group I've been in discussion with. And the gentleman, apologize if I have my laptop open in front of me, but the gentleman I've been in correspondence with from the other group that's supposed to present next month, very professional, very prompt, very detailed. And so they've been doing a good job on that side of things.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
And it was, just vote repairs during that period, that's going to be a project. That'll continue.
Christian, it's been my experience, I've been on the Neighborhood Board Number Two since 1989 uninterrupted. Been my experience that when bureaucracies and government agencies have an idea, they work on it constantly behind the scenes, and the more they are vested, and the more money they spend on it, the more vested they are to continue with it, in the face of proper reasonable community concerns, and no, they don't want it. So I think it's very important to actively kill this in its pre- infancy, because they're going to become very attached to it as a concept. It's got to be stopped.
I know, but it would be a good idea to take a vote on this, Chair, when you do have quorum. That gives me the backing to be really serious about this and perhaps withhold funding for the Complete Streets program, if they're not taking community concerns seriously. But I'd like to have the board take a position on.
Well, thank you so much for being here, because that's what makes the difference at these meetings. People like you big time, thank you.
Ms. Spengler, while I've got you on the mic for a second. The approach that Councilmember Waters was proposing, would that be your approach as well, or would you take a different track when you say kill it?
I would say actively kill it now. I'd go to the boards, actively kill it now when you have a quorum, obviously, it's still good. Because, like I said, they become very attached to something they've vested so much time and money in. And they always say, well, you know, we put this money in, and they want to justify it. Otherwise, they look like fools. They ignore the community saying, no, we don't want it, we don't need it, it causes problems. Even if we show the pictures and we try and make the case, it's so clear. Like you said, you all knew about the secret, the poorly-kept secret about people don't take the freeway. They all go down Kilawaya now. And I don't know that DOT has ever sat out there and studied the traffic like we do. I've been studying it for decades now, because, you know, they keep trying to, they don't have.
We don't have quorum, unfortunately, so we cannot. I've got two other resolutions here that need discussion.
But things like that, anything you don't want, you should actively try to kill in advance before people become attached and spend money on it, and they justify the project by passing it. That's why you have to stop it, otherwise it becomes, they lose face, they don't want to lose face. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Waters, as always, for the community concerns we bring to the table.
I just wanted to make a quick comment, I wanted to thank her again for your comments. The content of the resolution is in the same vein. You added a whole new perspective relative to other communities that get affected. And it's not only going to the Alaui, it's coming the other direction, especially when there's a backup on Kaulani Ole. Everybody takes Kilawaya, we know that, and it goes up the round. And the studies that were done by the Complete Streets folks were not done during all times of the day, I'll leave it at that. At the appropriate times, when people are home, parking their cars in the street, during the weekends, when we have recreational things happening at the parks, that sort of thing. So there are some, I just wanted to share that a little tidbit. Okay, thank you. And we got one more.
Absolutely, aloha Chair, members of the board, Chair Waters and community. I'm Chris Kinimaka, here as a resident today. I did want to share lipside on that point on Complete Streets, because we live on Kaulani and Pueo. We were there before the traffic got really bad. We want to see more solutions with the traffic that makes everybody divert to Kilawaya Avenue. I know that secret, everybody knows that. When it backs up on the freeway, we'll be going Kilawaya or around Diamond Head, whatever. But if you live on that street, it is not safe anymore. We cannot afford people to continue to think it's a highway. And in our study, my husband worked for DOT, we've done our research on what gets people to have safe streets in their community. It is choking down the street and limiting view. And while I love the meeting, I moved there because of the big canopy trees, people think those wide lanes are a freeway or a highway, and they come flying down that street. My son and I go walking five days a week, end of the day, or even early in the morning, and at least once a month, we literally almost get run over in our own crosswalk on Pueo and Kilawaya, right where the KCA preschool was, right? Yeah. Yeah, we're in the crosswalk, watching the lights, and the people are so eager to get down Kilawaya, they're not even looking for people crossing the street. So for us, some of those Complete Streets solutions make sense. How do you make it safer for pedestrians? It's not safe for bicyclists. There were complaints earlier about bicyclists on the sidewalk. That's because the street's not safe. You have cars parked there, cars are flying down that way. It's just not a safe neighborhood, and I feel so bad, because I love living where we live, in a community where we can walk around. But honestly, I can't cross my own street now. And my husband drives down there all the time, even in our vehicles, we see so many cars that go right through the red. And this is not like when it just changes. Yeah, it's like other cars go through, and then a car comes through on a red light. So I don't really want to kill Complete Streets, I'd like to see a better solution on Complete Streets, because we have to do something. I can't even walk my own sidewalk and be safe.
Absolutely, and first off, thank you for coming forward, representing the alternative side, and then also be willing to sacrifice then, behalf of the solution that you see well fit for this. It's so funny that you say that, I saw a car run a red light in Kilawaya today, and then I proceeded to almost get T-boned by a Mustang, making the left-hand turn off Kilawaya down Pueo. So it is exceptionally dangerous over there, please stay safe. I know that we've got a couple other people here to speak as well.
Solution. One of the solutions for that, and I've set this at the Neighborhood Board Number Two, because they don't give tickets, the police don't give tickets anymore. We had the head of City Department of Transportation and a policeman, and some elected officials years ago come to our community to look at the traffic problem. And the cars were coming in there, speeding, doing illegal things, actively clipping the policeman on the sidewalk. And he said, I'm standing here, why aren't they, why aren't they careful? The problem is, the police don't give tickets. And I've asked, and they say, oh, we do, no, they don't. And the policeman told me, we don't give, it was at one of the mayor's things, his town halls, and I talked to one of the, yeah, I talked to one of the policemen there at the mayor's town hall, and I said, why don't you guys give tickets? He said, oh, we do. And when I questioned him further, he said, we don't give tickets because the legislature invalidates them all. So that's a problem. We have people speeding on little residential roads, acting like idiots all over the island now. I grew up in territorial days, it's like a whole new world. And we need the police to give tickets. We might need more stop signs, might need more stoplights, but you see the Department of Transportation, city and state, don't want to put up stop traffic lights. Costs money, they don't want to do it, and they have to be maintenance. These are things that, at the community, come to the Neighborhood Board, just discuss where you need traffic lights, stop signs, like they finally put the four-way stops up here, you know, when you're crossing over the freeway on 18th Avenue. These people get killed there because it's not on the stop signs. You have to tell the city and the state, give the tickets, talk to legislature, don't invalidate them, put up more stoplights and stop signs, instead of taking away crosswalks, like they tried to do in Kakaako. They finally got it back, so this is where we pack, this is where we walk. Anyway, so I'm only talking because Tommy Waters is here, our council member and council chair. If you have any kind of pull, this is a situation. Policeman himself told me, we don't give tickets because they invalidate them. Legislature's passed laws, courts stopped them, invalidate the tickets, courts. So how that gets rectified, I'm not quite sure, I don't know if it goes to our senator or legislators, but it's a bigger issue than having Complete Streets come in and take out traffic, when people are all trying to find a way.
Well, thank you, thank you for letting me know that, Chris, because I could get HPD down there to start ticketing folks. The legislature cannot invalidate a ticket, but I could see the courts perhaps giving people a break. But we need to get HPD out there, so I'll send a note to them first thing in the morning tomorrow. I wasn't worried that people are speeding on that street, so, you know, certainly there's got to be a solution. And thank you, Ms. Spengler, again for your comments, too.
Well, obviously, a very important, Astrida, I see you come back there with your hand up.
I, wow, Mr. Waters, I feel like I'm seeing a unicorn. Finally, me too. My name's Astrida, I'm very new to this, I had to get involved because I just had to get involved recently. And I have to, I wanted to chime in on what the ladies were saying, because I live between Wailei Nui Ridge and Campbell and Herbert. And since COVID, it was nice and mellow when I got that place. I cannot believe the cars that are coming down Kilawaya Street. These tiny Herbert Street, all of those, they're getting directed that way because of the map quest, the GPS maps are directing drivers, I'm talking mostly tourists, and they are hauling Okole, blasting their stereos, I mean, I can't believe that I haven't seen like a child or an adult hit. I do see the police, but I don't see them when they're rolling that stop sign, I actually live right over it. So I'm like, I don't know, I'm watching the whole thing, or it wakes me up when they crash, and I think it just crashed into my bed. It's very exciting, but too exciting, I think I better move back up the hill full-time. And I just think that, I feel personally, that I've noticed more tourism ever than I've ever seen in my life. And I was raised, my dad had restaurants in Waikiki my entire childhood and life. And I mean, it is just, they say that the numbers aren't more, but I have to say, I disagree. And the money that we're talking about for these streets or projects, just like the Aloha Bus Project in the Kaimaki Board meetings, I got really involved because I was violently assaulted at Aloha Gas Station in August. And the law did not back me up, she got out on $10 bail. So today she did have her court, and we're going to go to trial. But I love seeing my neighbors like this, my community, and I feel like I have a voice. Sorry, I know I talked much longer than I should, but I just want to address that, because I don't ever see police there for the mopeds that are, you know, louder than garbage trucks at 3:00 a.m., all of that, but especially the tourists, and I don't think they're going to ticket the tourists, because that looks bad, right? HPD, but HPD is there when I call them, and I've had to call them a lot, it's like kind of, I'm like watching out for the neighborhood. But there's a huge change in the last nine months to 12 months. And I just wanted to chime in, and I, alumni, bicycle school.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure, because you mentioned three places, Wailei Nui, I know. Pueo, which is on Kilawaya, and then Campbell, which is in Kapo Hulu.
Well, yeah, yes.
Where should I get the police to come out and?
Well, you know, while I drive, I have a small business that covers all of those areas. So I feel, when she mentioned Campbell, I just said I could attest to Campbell and Herbert. And I think somebody mentioned some raised sidewalks, I don't know anything about the street Complete Streets, I just, again, recently started going to these meetings, but I just, I agree that nobody's getting tickets, or even just the presence of a police officer might be nice. I don't see a lot of cops over in Kapo Hulu.
To get the cops down there, so I'm assuming you're Pueo and Kilawaya, is that?
I take, Herbert turns into Kilawaya, so I take, I go all the way up, and it turns in at 6th Ave, it turns into Kilawaya, so I go past KCC, down Spooky Hill, and I go Kilawaya, you know, after your house, I guess. My clients all live in Kahala and Wailei Nui Ridge, so I can attest to that, and then of course, Pahoa.
So the Complete Streets portion that ETS is talking about would drastically change Kilawaya from Wailei Avenue to, I think, Hunakai Street is where we're talking about.
Right, where the big trees are, that I think Mr. Brian Wong was talking about that, was that right?
Is that where the speeding's occurring?
Oh, well, yeah, that's, I mean, it's, of course, it's just one street's a lot thinner, it's more like San Francisco. You know, all of those Herbert, Kaua Loa, Aloha, I mean, now they're dealing with the bus. And that's another thing that you mentioned, the ladies of Aloha, I call them Cagney and Lacy, they're my inspiration, and they are not happy, and they said the same thing. They said we had no notification, they said they sent a letter, and their voices are being heard. They're, you know, barreling and texting and going to these meetings, and I guess looking for certain people, maybe you, Mr. Waters. But there, you know, the gentleman from, sorry, I forget his name, but he was the head of the whole thing, and somebody asked him, have you even ridden the bus, this line? And he said, no, and I said, I think you ride the bus. Take, experience it, I worked for the Super Ferry, we got on the ferry, we've been everywhere, you know, you learn it in and out. I just don't, I'm not going to teach somebody how to ride a bike if I can't ride a bike. But anyway, he did say, you know, they're complaining about no bus stops, no sidewalks, this street was not made for it, what was wrong with the old line, and they had a lot of great points. And people are barreling through that corner too, I mean, it's unreal that more accidents haven't happened. Speaking of the red lights, I've had a great year, let me tell you. I got hit and run by Wailei Cafe, the busiest Waikiki intersection in all of Waikiki, I believe, and during a parade down the street, and the guy got away with, and I thought, when they said they were getting those red light cameras, I'm like, why, we don't need that, they can spend their money on other things. No, now I watch every red light, and it's unreal, oh, it's two, three seconds, and people are just like, they don't care. The gentleman from the city, I guess, sorry, I don't have the name on the top of my head, but he said that, you know, oh, well, that's going to be $60,000 for a sidewalk. Well, guess what? We're the Kamaaina, we're the locals. We're dealing with the infrastructure problems, the homelessness, all this. If you are bringing in all this tourism, somebody's making some money. Let's make sure that our neighborhoods are taken care of, because as we all know, we're dealing with a lot there, as their old neighborhood now, right? But I don't know, it was just, that's not what we wanted to hear. If you're going to put a new bus line in, you should have bus, they had a picture of, photo visuals are great. And they had a huge picture blown up of a man in a wheelchair like halfway into the street. I prayed, I don't even pray, and I prayed for him.
Obviously, a lot of different factors affecting the traffic in Kilawaya, which drastically needs to be improved. Something that definitely needs to be done for safety. My thought is, at our next meeting, when we have quorum, we propose a resolution so that Complete Streets is, they have to complete a traffic study. And I really like the physical ideas, where we physically lay out some cones, and just see one week, a month, I do not care, just as long as we get a solid answer, just what this is going to look like for all of us, whether you're in support or not. Let's find out what this affects, and then how we can best address it from there. And then even from there, maybe some bus line changes to go along with it further on.
Yeah, I only brought up Aloha because of the discussion. I do think it's those GPS things, though, because the people are like, oh, I could take. GPS things, though, because the people are like, oh, I could take another route, you know? So somebody's directing that. Same with the reason why China Wall's so overwhelmed, and Queens Bath and Kauai is closed now. I witnessed that.
Thank goodness, we only have to deal with Kilauea.
True, true. They all, they all commit.
Thank you so much, Estrida. See, does anybody else in the community have any concerns? What this, okay, all right. So up next, announcements, our regular board meeting will be held one month from now, Thursday, November 21st, 2024, will be held in this building, Akihale, 7:00 PM, and also on WebEx, that link is always sent out. So we hope to see all of you again there. Do I have a vote to adjourn? Oh, cool, all right. That's a ritual, you should always do that. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. Thank you so much this evening.